We're here, roll call.
Margie Ferris, present. Carla?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Sherry?
Here.
Brian, absent, excused.
Yeah.
Okay, approval and any amendments to the agenda? Okay, approval to the agendas. Approval minutes on the August 20th, 2025 minutes. Everybody have a chance to read them? All in favor for that? Okay, the Clay Township zoning board of appeals process, the Clay Township Board of Appeals, the ZBA, primarily addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape, or contour and over location of existing buildings. We are guided by 2705 ordinance 126. There are five members on the ZPA, which we've got four here today. Three members constitute a forum. Again, we have four, so each appeal before the ZBA will have a public hearing at which time the appellate will first present his or her case and then public comment regarding the issue will follow. During this time, members of the board may ask questions of clarification. If a particular point gets belabored, the chairman has the right to limit comments. When the public hearing is called, the board will move onto the deliberation phase of the case before us. If the appellate should disagree with the board's decision, he or she has the right to go to circuit court within 30 days after the minutes have been approved. When your appeal has concluded, you're welcome to leave or stay. So, we're good on that. Okay, new business. 6A, JZBA 2025-008. We got someone representing that? Point Trumbull, 5280 Point Trumbull Road.
Yes, you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I just, oh.
Who's gonna speak on your behalf? We just need you to come up, state your name, your address, and why you're here.
Not the address of the building?
Yes.
Name and address, yes.
All right, John Corchmar, 5280 Point Trumbull Boulevard. One of those around for you.
Nope, just why you're here.
All right, so we're getting, looking for a variance to add on to the back of the building to keep the same width of it, just add the depth of it.
In the back there?
Yes. We want to keep the 20 feet easement across the back. Reached out the DTE, they have no problems with it. Talked to the building inspector, talked to the fire department. Seems like they have no issues with it.
I was over there and it's already all fenced in and all that, right?
Right.
And your parking is in the front there?
Parking is in the front. We recently demoed the house to the right of it.
I've seen that.
And that would be like part parking lot and part, what do I want to call it? Like the yard, you know, to keep any kind of trailers, parking. So, I'm a general contractor and I do custom mill work.
Is that a cabinet shop?
Yeah.
Is that what that is there?
Yeah, so we do like commercial cabinets and we do custom cabinets for homes and built-ins and things like that.
Well, that's to expand your current cabinet business?
Correct.
You're not changing that?
Right.
You said you're gonna be storing?
Well, maybe we'll just have like an enclosed trailer and I'll be parking for?
Delivering and?
Yes.
Okay, well, you can sit down now. Let's see if there's any, open up for public comments? Anybody? Nobody? I don't think we had any letters on this. There's no letters, so I'll close public comments. Gary, you have anything on this one or that would help us?
Well, see, John came with crutches for the sympathy vote.
I was gonna say something about it, I'm like, uh-huh. You guys missed out, see? Maybe you could borrow mine as well.
So, we have an existing building here and, you know, what this really entails is the side street. So, when you're on a side street, you have to meet the setbacks for both streets. And this is an existing building that virtually has zero setback, so it doesn't meet that 40-foot setback. So, what they're looking to do is to extend the building to the back and just maintain that existing building line. So, that's where the 40-foot comes into play. The existing building remains the same, they're just looking to extend it farther back into the lot. I don't see where it's gonna cause any further obstruction on anything in behind there is a DBW yard. There's plenty enough area to the rear of the property that will be left for any encroachment coming out, any views that won't be blocked as people are coming in and out of their business, so.
Can I ask you a question? Will it have a different driveway area to get back there? Are you gonna have the same in and out that you do now?
It's gonna be attached.
Okay, I mean, I knew it was attached, I just didn't know if you were gonna put in another drive like in behind there or something like that. Okay.
You know what's on the other side of that? Do you ever take your, did you go by there?
Yeah.
So, the, where we take the refuse? It's right there.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was gonna be traffic ridden. Yeah, back here, exactly.
Does it butt right up to the other property where the refuse is?
Yes.
The property does, but the building won't be right to there.
No.
Yeah, 'cause there's a space here.
Oh, okay.
So, that's what you were, Carlos?
Yeah, so if this is the sidewalk, right? And then the refuse is back here?
It's probably at this fence line on your drawing?
So, then they have parking up here, is there gonna be also like a driveway coming back here so that when people are trying to get in and out of here, is that gonna be a problem?
I don't think it is.
Yeah.
Dead space.
All the other setbacks on this building will be met.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we're just looking at the 40-foot from the road and the building already is?
Existing.
Existing and they're just going back, okay?
Yes.
Everybody good, everybody good with that? With the, any more questions or?
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve JZBA 2025-008 for 5280 Point Trumbull. He's requesting for 40-foot variance on the ordinance 126, section 18 dot 08 point 5, as written.
Oh, second.
Okay, we've got a motion, we got a second, and let's roll call for that.
Margie Ferris, yes? Carla?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
And Brian's absent.
Okay, so we've got approval for this variance.
Congratulations.
We're gonna write this up and then?
Yeah, it just takes a few minutes. We'll have to fill out a form. You guys are all set, though. If you want to stay, you're welcome to stay.
We could use some more.
Okay, you're welcome.
All set? Okay. All right, next new business. JZBA 2025-009 and the 8371 Colony Drive. If we have somebody from the residence or builder to come up and talk to us about it, about the practical difficulty.
My name's Tom Prokoski and my office is at 6625 Dyke Road in Clay Township. And I'm representing Mr. Gigliotti tonight. He just felt that I could possibly answer your questions better than he could, so?
Sure, yeah, that's, that's fine.
I'll do the best I can. Frank is a new member to the community and he, actually, I worked for him last year and we built a ranch house for him because he didn't want the stairways and things like that. He had an existing boathouse and garage and he felt that his storage situation, everything would be fine if he built a ranch because on Colony, on the riverside, they have an 80-foot setback and on a 60-foot lot, it really restricts the size of the house unless you go up, which he didn't want to do, of course, because he wanted to keep everything on one level.
Okay.
Unfortunately, what happened is, is the existing boathouse that was there when he bought the property, the, he knew that there was a problem, but he didn't realize how bad it was and the foundations in the back part of the boathouse garage failed. There weren't any piling or anything, there was just a cement footing and it just basically started to collapse in the rear part of the building. So, Frank came to me and asked me what I thought he should do and tried to get them to jack the footings up and everything was very costly. And we'd still have a 50-year-old foundation that we were working off of, so he decided to demo the building and basically try to get what he already had back again. We're using the basic footprint that the existing building had. The one wall on the boathouse opens up a little bit and what it does is it closes up the garage, makes the garage a little bit smaller than what he had previously. And then to get the additional storage, what we did is we planned a second story over the top of the garage and that's basically gonna be the main storage area. Now, I know that the board in the past has had quite a few of these come in front of you and I basically have presented most of them. The one thing I can honestly say here is we're not gonna hook up any sewer, we're not gonna hook up any water, we just want to basically store some boats and basically have the storage that we need that we couldn't get on the other side of the street. The lot sizes are small, they're only 40 by 60. And by the time you put your boat well area in there, the only way to get that storage that you need is to go up above the garage area, which is what we're asking to do. The first original building that was there didn't meet the height restrictions either. It was above?
The mean height?
Yes. And when we planned the building, what we were trying to do is keep the building as low profile as we possibly could. So, what we did is we reversed the trusses the opposite direction of what the original building had. And what it did is it lowered or decreased the span, which lowered the height of the actual roof areas. We also had special truss designed to accommodate the boats so that, again, we could hold that roof area down as far as we could. There are existing boathouses and buildings in the area that are higher than what we were trying to do. We're just trying to blend the architecture of his new house with the boathouse and, again, get him the storage that he's lost by tearing down the existing building.
Okay, so, hold that for a second, we'll open it up for public comments and I don't see anybody, so.
Is there no letters on it?
(laughing)
Is there no letters on it?
I didn't see any.
I didn't see any either.
Yeah.
Did you have any letters from your neighbors or anything?
As far as building the boathouse?
No, yeah, about any of this, I didn't, I didn't, if we missed something?
No, I discussed it with them, they know what we're doing. There was no negative comments made. They're all looking forward to me finishing this project so that they can go on with their lives.
Yeah.
Because it's been, you know, with the house construction was a pretty big disruption in their lives for the year that we spent building that house and now that we're doing this with the boathouse?
It's a narrow road.
But, you know, it's not that far away.
So, no nasty notes on your car or anything?
Not yet.
When you wake up in the morning? Okay.
Okay, we'll close public comments and then we can ask some questions here. Now, the boathouse height, is that good for high water down too?
The actual?
Have you considered the high water? Because we're at low water now.
Yeah, no, no, the basically garage floor and the height will be actually above the 100-year floodplain.
Just for, if they had to raise your boat high enough in the high water?
Well, yeah, and that's why we had to keep the roof lines down a little bit. I actually have a drawing of it here. I had an engineer design a special truss that will allow him, even if the water goes up, to still get his boat up out of the water.
Doesn't look any different than the rest of them down there.
But what's the reason for the eight? What's the reason for the eight foot instead of seven foot? What is it, seven foot? 6'11". So, it's, we're a foot over.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great question and honestly, you know?
Because we have a lot of them that say they need this, they need that. What's your reason?
Well, you know, basically, the truth of it is, we're looking for the future. We don't know exactly how the township's gonna react. You know, if you go back to 1923 or 24, when the colony started, you know, the houses on the riverside weren't even supposed to have garages. All the storage in the boathouses were supposed to be just on the canal side. And in the future, we don't know what's gonna happen. There's been a lot of controversy over people putting living space and things above the boathouses. I don't think I'm saying anything out of order to say that there's some older buildings down there that have that. We're not asking for that. We're just asking that if Frank had to sell in the future or if something changed in the future and he wanted to do something different, he could get that extra, a normal height, eight-foot height.
Well, we're probably gonna write it, if we do approve it, that there's no living space ever on that property, but?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want you to put it in exactly like that. We're not looking for living space, but I, in the future, let's say 10 years from now, 12 years from now, 15 years from now, let's say ordinance changes. We wouldn't want to be restricted down the line.
If the ordinance changes, though, then?
Then it changes.
The rule on that house would change.
Okay, I mean, yeah, I just wouldn't want the stipulation to be a 100 definite thing, but we're not looking for living space, but we are looking down the line, there's no doubt about it. We don't want to restrict our?
Well, it changes, it changes for everybody.
Right.
Absolutely. I agree, 100%.
Whether we, we said it was 100 years or 1,000 years, right?
Yeah.
No living space, but right now, there's not supposed to be any living space.
That's, and I agree with that 100%. That's why we're not, we wanted to bring up the point that we aren't bringing any water, we're not bringing any sewer in, into this structure.
Aesthetically, though, I could see somebody living up there. I mean, not saying that you're doing that, but I'm just saying like in the future too, like for forward thinking, I mean, there's a window there, you know, it's nice looking. It's a very nice looking boathouse, by the way. But?
Well, I want it to match up with the house.
Sure.
That's kind of where I'm born with it.
How big's the square footage up there?
Don't hold me right to this, I'm gonna say? Not quite 500, just a little under 500.
Yeah, it's not huge.
I guess, hold on a second. Gary, do you have anything to say to help us?
Yeah, you know, it's atypical Colony Drive.
Yeah.
However you decide to vote on this, I would just make sure that we would do stipulations about no plumbing, storage only. That would be my comments.
Nice, I did notice that part of that you were putting new seawall in, is that, that was just part of the, the foundation problems?
Well, no, the foundation problems were a separate issue, but?
That you were there?
That was, we had a 45 or 50-year-old seawall, they only have about a 50-year-old, 50-year life.
Right.
And it just seemed like if you're gonna put a new building there, you should take the next step. But it is two different issues.
Yeah, right, okay, I just, I noticed that there. That's, how many boats in that house, in that boathouse?
How many?
How many boats?
Two.
Two boats. So, we're good on that. Yeah, we've been saying, stipulating now on those? No storage only, yeah. All the other setbacks are set, so this is just the mean height and the eight-foot. And eight-foot, the only justification you're saying is for the future, you could design to 6'11".
Oh, well, yeah, we could always drop it, drop the ceiling, but again, I think it takes away from any future situations that Frank might run into and I think it would restrict his saleability in the future.
Yeah. That's kind of, you're? You're self-creating the issue when you're doing it that way.
I think what we're doing is, yes, I guess you could say that, but again, I've been in front of this board, well, not you people necessarily, but in front of this on probably eight other boathouses down there. And they felt that in the past that it wasn't a big deal to allow the eight-foot and they granted it every time.
Yeah.
I know that's, you know, and again, I know that's the past and today's the future, don't misunderstand me, but I don't think we're asking for anything more than any of the neighbors have and other existing boathouses or garages and boathouses down there. There's plenty of them that have that eight-foot ceiling rather than seven-foot six. Or 6'11".
6'11" now.
Would you rather have an area with eight-foot ceilings or be carrying stuff around in a 6'11"? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but we're just going by the ordinance.
Yeah, we're talking about this much space and really, we're talking about?
500 feet, 50 feet, yeah.
Yeah, but if you look at the mean height of both roofs, it's only like two-foot, 10-inch difference. It's not like we're asking to, you know, what difference is it gonna make if we drop it six inches or eight inches?
Yeah. No, I mean, it's not gonna affect the, it's just the, the living area.
Well, again, we're not asking for living area, we're asking for storage.
And we're just, I was just looking for another?
Well, we're looking for the practical difficulty.
Right, we have to fill out a form.
For the foot.
Well, the practical difficulty in this case would be protecting your property value when you look down the line. Like I said, if something, okay, let's just say hypothetically, 10 years from now, and everything changes because there's been so many problems on the colony. Somebody wants to buy his piece of property, he's competing against 12 other buildings down there that have full eight-foot high ceilings and he could lose a possible sale over it. And I know that's, we're talking about dollars and cents here, but a person should be allowed to protect their investment.
Yeah, based on that road, you mean?
Yeah.
Colony?
I mean, he's not really asking for anything that hasn't, that isn't already there.
Approved.
Gary, would you say that 50% of the boathouses down there have an eight-foot ceiling? More than that?
We haven't proved it.
I'm just asking.
A lot of people come in here with a good woodworking in there or putting animals up there.
That was on her side. That was taxidermy.
I can come up with all those if you want.
We don't let that out.
This guy had bears and everything else.
That's a good one, though, I like how you stated it now, I guess, you know, it's?
The guy was like six-foot five and he's like, I need some tall.
If my kids get to places, my son-in-law's a lot bigger than I.
Oh, you're gonna give it to him? I'll tell him.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve it as written then. I'm comfortable with the?
With no, with the storage only?
Yep, storage only. No utilities up there other than lights, of course, and just?
Do you remember what you write on all these on the, the wording, you know how?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just as long as you're not planning on having anyone living up there. I mean, I understand what you're saying about future, but, you know, we just don't want it to turn into a rental situation where?
Of course.
You know, people are just driving down there renting and keep your value up as well, right?
Exactly.
So? I feel good.
I would be specific to say no water sewer.
Yes, I said no utilities other than electric.
Right, but utilities could include?
I would say no. Okay, right, so no plumbing?
Yeah, we want, you can have heat.
Well, I would say that heating would be permissible.
Yeah.
Okay.
What about plumbing?
No plumbing.
If I wanted some water in the building, the structure itself, it could be on the first floor.
Well, then you would pull it from the canal, right?
It would pump from the canal.
It would pump from the canal.
I could pull it from the canal.
Right.
But it wouldn't be drinking water. It would be, you know?
Well, that's why we're, that's why we're approving this.
Right.
Is to, so that make sure that there's no plumbing and you're not having living area over there.
Yeah. Okay.
Just have to back walk, back across the street for the water?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Or plug a fridge in with a bunch of waters.
Is that with the?
We'll work around that.
Yeah, no plumbing and storage only. Yes.
Well, we have, did we have a second on that?
I'll send it.
Oh, you seconded.
As long as it's lifetime of no living area, living space.
While the ordinance is the way it is, exists, okay?
If it changes, then I can revisit it.
Yes. Or you can come back before the ZBA.
All right.
There you go, you see us again, maybe, you know?
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second from Sherry and, okay, roll call.
All right. Margie Ferris, yes? Carla?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
And Brian's absent.
Okay, the motion now carried, yes.
Motion's approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, both of you.
Thank you, thanks for giving us some time, appreciate it.
See, we don't bite, you didn't need crutches, you need anything.
So, reasonable decision, ZBA decision.
Well, welcome to Clay Township.
Oh, thank you, I'm really enjoying it. Beautiful area.
Going on 31 years.
Oh, you're a rookie.
Child.
Permanent living space. Storage only.
And no plumbing.
No, it's interesting, I really wasn't too familiar with that particular area until I met my current girlfriend. She lives on Blueville.
Okay.
And I had a condo in New Baltimore and I said, I'm never moving out of the condo unless the house goes for sale on this street. What do you know?
Yeah.
House went up for sale, within minutes, I was buying it.
Once you're just hooked, you're, it's over, you'll never leave here.
No. It's my neighbor's home, she's not leaving.
I, I moved from the city and it's funny because I drive to work, you know, an hour typically every day and people always say to me, God, don't you just want to drive, you know, move closer to the city? And I said, no, I don't. I said, you don't drive home to what I drive home to. You know, and it's, you can't beat it, I mean, you can't, sitting in your backyard?
If you need more work.
Yeah, watching the sunset and everything else, it's just, it's just too perfect, too perfect. I actually lived on Flamingo right across from you for a while.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. 26 years?
Well, they've been watching me go through my thing here for the last year. Couple neighbors came over and walked over and said, we've been watching this house go up, now what are you doing with this boathouse?
Yeah.
Because we had to knock them both down.
Sure.
Unfortunately.
Well, you picked a good spot.
Yes, no doubt.
Beautiful street. We're just filling out our paperwork. All right, you guys, good night, see you later.
Congratulations.
You dropped the act, no, I mean, you're good.
I'm happy to see you're growing your business.
So, you said you make cabinets?
Yes.
I didn't even know you were there, how long have you been there? Um, I didn't even know you were there, how long have you been there? How long have you been there?
Need a big sign, no. It was a collision shop.
I remember that, yeah, so how long have you been there?
Oh, we're not moved in or anything.
Okay, so that's why I didn't know, okay, good, cuz I'm thinking, man, I drive by there every day, so, I mean, am I just blind, like, why didn't I know that?
I don't know, was that flashing light or what, but like, you know, really see it at the second?
Yeah.
But, yeah, we haven't moved in yet, which is kinda foggy.
Did you guys just move out here?
No, we moved out here twenty-two years ago, we're now at twenty-six and months.
Okay, nice. Well, I'll have to, um, stop in and see you guys when you're getting situated, um, hand out some of your cards. Are you moving from a different location then?
No, we just kinda like work out of the barn right now.
Oh, nice.
So, yeah.
Cool, do you make other furniture or just cabinets?
Yeah.
No, anything, I mean, we do like hand scraped beams, we do it indoors, we do no work for like some commercial jobs and things like that.
Wow, I'd love to come check it out.
We do, uh, built tons and stuff like that.
He's being modest.
Yeah? Well, I would love to stop in and see it, honestly.
Okay.
I used to, I used to own a kitchen design center.
You did?
Real old, sold it two years ago.
Okay, uh, any unfinished business?
I don't think so.
Any?
Oh.
No, unfinished business for this, for us? Now we're... Planning, anything on planning?
Uh, yeah, there's quite a few things on planning. Let's see, um, one of the properties in Harson's Island asked to rezone from C-two to residential, and it was already kind of an residential, residential area, and prior, a long time ago, like, close to town, it was a, um, a, a, a commercial property, and we did grant that it would allow to be, yeah, and then, um, what came before the board was regarding that commercial outdoor for the acreage, for the, um, for the, uh...
Yeah, two of them are doing the cabinets, too.
Okay, good.
Well, the home par, yeah.
I was gonna thought of cabinets.
Yeah, the camp, camp sites, the camp sites, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, middle channel.
The middle, yeah, and they, it wasn't regarding the middle channel, it was allowing the planning, the ability to reduce the acreage, and that was approved.
Less than ten.
Less than ten campsites.
Ten campsites.
Ten, ten or less.
For ten acres.
Right, less than ten, requirements for campgrounds with less than ten campsites, not an acre or whatever.
Oh, an acre, yeah.
Um, and then also, the sign thing came before them, again, regarding the sign, good. They, they made some stipulations, and I think they're taking it before the board and see if we're gonna be approved. It was a public meeting, so...
That's just the flashing sign, like the post sign.
Yeah, yeah, just the flashing, how, how many, how bright it can be, no, well, how bright the, yeah. Post, that was also part of it, but as far as the flashing, yeah, it was a big deal because, you know, that's coming up, we're seeing more businesses, you wanna make sure, and there was a public meeting, and we kind of, um, pushed back on that.
So what happens to the business?
They are, no, no. Their grandfather. We can ask them to change it, to be compliant, yeah, their grandfather. And then we went over the master plan again, which was vision goals and objectives, and it's so interesting, watching our master plan, and our population is kinda shrinking, and it's aging, and so, we need, um, businesses, we wanna encourage that, it was a lot of good things on, um, there regarding that, and if people wanting more beach area, and they're trying to get that, the park, yep, that's why, that was part of it, that was part of the old, you know, because we're just reviewing the old, like, in twenty nineteen, and we're kind of like sticking with the same thing, and, but, people were asked, what do you want, they want more beach, they want more sidewalks, they wanted more bike paths and things like that, and they wanted a downtown, um, which, you know...
Yeah, you have that, you have that bike path, but there's not really, um...
They wanted to strengthen businesses and have more things for people, and I think they're trying to continue that in the business plan, yeah.
I was on the DVA, wow.
And possibly even small, shrinking the, um, sizes of homes because families and people are single, people are aging, maybe looking into duplexes, um, we did discuss that a little bit more, like, as far as housing went, and, uh, I think it's a great idea, so...
I tried to get my condos to, um, want the, you know, the unit owners, cuz they own property, they, so, um, I talked to them about building ranch condos up to the river, you know, or at least partially, to, you know, maybe six to ten, and they, they're like...
It's cuz you own it, and there's no association, you know, so they were looking into that, and then because we have a minimum square footage, what is it here, Gary, is it a thousand square feet? A home can be built?
That's an echo.
Oh, I'm sorry, the thousand square feet, we have a minimum square foot of building a home here? Thousand, so we discussed possibly, maybe looking at, it was, nothing was set in stone, but it was actually discussed a little bit, maybe some smaller, maybe duplexes and stuff like that.
Yeah, I don't think I signed it, I did the one, but not the other.
Gary, I know you don't have anything to do with this, but, um...
Wait, let's collect, mine's a...
Let's finish.
Any public comments, is he gonna come in now, now it doesn't look like he's giving up?
I don't think he came, did he?
No.
I guess, uh, we can adjourn, um, motion to adjourn.
I second.
On favor?
All right.
Meeting's closed.
Okay.